Hello everyone, good evening and welcome to the virtual forum for Tucker City Council District 3. I'm your host Decaturish Editor and Founder Dan Wasen Hunt. This forum is being livestreamed on Facebook and will be uploaded to our YouTube channel. If you want to watch it later, so if you're having tech issues tonight, don't worry, we're going to put it somewhere where you can find it later. If you've got questions, throw them in the chat. We'd love to hear from you. We'd love to hear what you have to ask our candidates. And quick shout out for our fundraiser, uh, visit support your local news.com and support our fundraiser today. It's what allows us to continue to provide opportunities like this to all of the candidates uh, in our local races. So with that, I want to introduce our candidates tonight. We have incumbent council member Alexis Weaver. Alexis, hello?
Hello.
Thank you for joining us and we have her challenger Sam Ulrich. Sam, how are you today?
I'm good. How are you Dan?
Cannot complain. Thank you both so much for joining us. So the way this is going to work is I'm going to give each candidate uh, two minutes to make an opening statement and we're going to have two minutes to answer each question, save for our first question. I'll explain why in a minute. Uh, so with that, I'm going to start with Alexis Weaver. You have two minutes to make your opening statement.
Thank you, Dan. I really appreciate Decaturish hosting these forums. Um, I'm Tucker City Council Member Alexis Weaver. I represent District 3 Post 1. I'm an experienced leader and urban planner with over 20 years of economic and community development experience. From working at a Chamber of Commerce to the Atlanta Community Food Bank and now to the Urban Institute in DC, where I teach city leaders across the country, how to strategically engage their full communities in efforts to end poverty. I've lived in Tucker for almost 13 years, the past four to five, near Henderson Park, uh, on the Lake Erin side. I have three great kids at our local schools and uh, we attend Smoke Rise Baptist Church. I ran in 2021 on a platform of inclusion, government transparency and housing for all people in Tucker. And I've delivered on those. I've led the effort to make Juneteenth a city holiday and championed Tucker's non-discrimination ordinance, keeping it front and center until we passed it. I've successfully put over $150,000 in the city's budget to deliver a housing study. And then most recently, a catalyzing residential development policy recommendation from external housing experts. I'm running for reelection to build on those efforts, provide the energized, inclusive and bold leadership needed so that Tucker can continue to flourish and thrive. I have the knowledge, commitment and qualifications to continue to provide that leadership. And I'm going to encourage folks to visit alexisforttucker.com to get involved in the campaign. I appreciate your support.
Thank you. Uh, Sam, two minutes to make your opening statement.
Alright, my name is Sam Ulrich and I've lived in Tucker for eight years, which is almost the entire time that Tucker's been a city. Uh, I've lived in Atlanta my whole life, uh, and I'm a father and a husband. I'm an Eagle Scout and I've been a finance professional for over 10 years, uh, with a degree in finance that focused on the economics. I want to help Tucker do more while helping keep the small town neighborhood feeling that it has. I want to simplify zoning and reduce our dependence on slups and drive community engagement and civil affairs and city programs. Because driving a safer and smarter city, full of good neighbors, creates that safe community that everybody wants to call home. And I'm thankful to call Tucker my home and for the opportunity to potentially serve as its city council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, so I want to jump into this next question and preface this by letting people know. We, we welcome your questions. I know we're going to get a question about pickleball, so I'm going to cut to the chase on that. But I also want you to know that we sent all the candidates a Q and A and we asked them uh, to fill that out as well. So you will hear this question addressed multiple times, but because we've asked about it in other formats, we're going to just stick to 60 seconds on this question so we can move on to other topics. Uh, Sam, starting with you, what is your opinion about uh, pickleball and that project that's proposed at the Tucker Rec Center? You got 60 seconds.
I think we are in the middle of a, a turning point on it. There's uh, multiple studies, I think out, out there being uh, looked at right now to, that are on the verge of coming back. And um, once we know more on the sound mitigation studies and the new bids on the revised plan, um, we'll know a bit more on how the best course to pursue is. There's just so much information that's still yet to be finalized that I don't think coming to a conclusion right now is a, is a solid thing to do.
Thank you. Alexis, same question to you.
Sure. Well, I am really excited that that pickleball sound mitigation report um, has come back and the agenda was released today. Um, and the PSM folks are going to be presenting on Monday night at the council meeting, um, the results of that study. Um, that said, I continue to share that my concerns with this project have so much less to do with pickleball and so much more to do with process. Um, and really the city um, really fell down on our commitments to our community. Uh, that's why I engaged the neighbors of the Rec Center, um, after asking for almost a year and a half, uh, where the community input process was. Um, so I want to make sure regardless of where we land on pickleball itself, that we are really thinking about all of our processes and how community input and true community, meaningful community engagement happens in the design and execution of our capital projects.
Thank you. Uh, next question is going to be two minutes and we're going to start with Alexis Weaver. Alexis, what in your opinion is the role of a city council member?
Well, uh, at its core, we are public servants and we are policymakers. Uh, so Tucker has a council manager form of, form of government and our role as the policymakers uh, in the city council is to set policy. We should do that in an inclusive way that is responsive to the needs of the residents and the taxpayers. Um, and we need to make sure that we hold the city staff and leadership accountable. But the way that we do that is directly through the city manager. It is not to go and hold individual staff accountable, but to work with the uh, direct reports to the city council, uh, to make sure that that happens. Um, it really is about hearing and listening to what community members' concerns are, needs are, and thinking about how all of those factor together to see if, do we need better communication or different communication? Do we need a different strategy? Are we creating systemic barriers that we don't realize we are? And so for me as a constituent advocate, it's to really listen, really try to help uh, highlight information and opportunities to engage and make sure that we are following through on our commitments as a city. Um, and that we are uh, the best version of ourselves uh, as a city that we can be.
Thank you. Sam, same question. What in your opinion is the role of a city council member?
Uh, the city council member to me is a, the bureaucratic voice of the constituents that they represent. I think in, in specifically our instance here, that means District 3 first and all of Tucker second. Um, and it's our job to help mitigate that difference should they ever come um, out of harmony. Uh, the other thing is that we need to be able to take the voice of our constituents and hear them. Because a lot of them probably don't want to uh, engage directly with the bureaucracy that it requires to get code changes or uh, permits approved for, for people that aren't directly affecting them. Um, and it is up to us to hear those voices and, and help guide their, those visions through the bureaucratic process. The, the process itself being as um, you know, structured as it is, uh, it takes somebody dedicated to voice all of those uh, opinions in one, in one way. And uh, and that's the role of a city council person.
Thank you. Uh, one of the themes of some of the Q and A responses we got, uh, because we sent Q and As to all these candidates are, are uh, people talking about their experience in Tucker in particular, their experience with, with cityhood and their experiences as an elected official being a, a reason uh, to vote for them. And I'm just curious, uh, starting with Sam, in your opinion, how much does experience as an elected official matter when you're running for elected office?
Uh, it, it certainly helps because if you have been an elected official, unfortunately I haven't and at this point, uh, as far as in the Tucker government. Um, it gives you that experience to know uh, what steps to take to be most efficient in solving problems. Um, fortunately I was one of the first, uh, I guess they call them graduates of the University of Government Affairs that Tucker put on, which now is I believe called Tucker 101. It's a fantastic course. I encourage anybody living in Tucker to take it, um, to gain insight into the inner workings of the Tucker government. Uh, but I, I did participate in that early on in Tucker cityhood and it gave me that insight into exactly what cogs need to spin in order to keep Tucker chugging along. Um, and so while I don't have the elected experience, I do have a bit more both interest and experience than quite a few people who don't, who also don't have the elected experience.
Thank you. Alexis, same question.
Well, so um, we have term limits in the city of Tucker, right? And so uh, always want to encourage people uh, to, you know, throw their hat in the ring. Um, we do, you know, we have people who have turned out. I wasn't a, an elected official before I ran. Um, I think it's really important that we not focus on the single story or narrative of what it means to be Tucker, what it means to be a city. And there's a lot of different types of experience that matter, right? So lived experience, professional experience. Um, I'm, have a master's degree in community and regional planning. I focused on participatory planning, stakeholder-led decision-making. That is what I, the qualification I brought to when I ran in 2021 and why people elected me. So you don't have to have had a elected official experience, although I will say I also was on our principal advisory committee uh, and have gone through a number of open meetings act and, and, and understand the role that it plays to, to be involved in city governance in any way. Um, additionally, there's lived experience of engaging with the community. Um, before I ran for a city council, I was on the Board of Networks Cooperative Ministry for eight years. Uh, I was very highly involved in my local church and going and participating with my children in all different types of sports activities. So there's a lot of experience and engagement that does really matter. It matters to have and see different perspectives, to understand how different communities are able to do different things. Um, and to be able to pull all those things together as you are setting policies, not so that the city chugs along, but so that we thrive, so that we grow. So we have a, a trajectory that really encompasses the vision of that full diversity of our community. Um, so it doesn't have to be elected experience, but experience does matter.
Thank you. This next question comes from a reader and before I get to that, if you are watching us on Facebook Live and you have a question, throw it in the chat. We'll try to get to it, uh, if we can. Visit support your local news.com, support our fundraiser today if you appreciate this opportunity that we are providing. Uh, our reader asks, uh, starting with Alexis, what type of redevelopment plan are you seeking for Northlake Mall? What do you think is viable? What does the city need and what is the market saying? You have two minutes.
Yeah, so um, I would say it's not about what I'm seeking, right? So we have a comprehensive plan, uh, that we updated just a couple of years ago. Uh, we'll do a deep dive update, uh, in about three more years. Um, and that vision for the community is the community's vision. So anything, when we talk about any area of our community and how we think about how this should develop, it is important to go back to that comprehensive plan and think about how do these development projects move that forward? Northlake is a very complicated area. Not only is it a former suburban shopping mall, um, we have some very complex annexation challenges, uh, with a single part of that property not being in the city of Tucker um, and being in DeKalb County, that, that makes redevelopment challenging. Um, I'm really proud of the fact that we passed a planned unit development, um, ordinance, uh, last year that allows for not just Northlake Mall, but also Northlake Festival and other properties nearby to be creative and master plan and think about how they could fully reuse the site. So hopefully, uh, that's the vision that we have, right? That, that developers would come to us. We also have an opportunity to do more proactive engagement with developers from commercial to residential and everything in between. Um, but we really haven't done the work to cast a vision for what that looks like. Some of the most creative projects that you hear about in neighboring cities, um, again, housing, mixed use, commercial, those are recruited projects that have a vision, they have a incentive to it and they have buy-in from, from the community, um, both residents and, you know, uh, business community. We have a really important opportunity to do that and um, I think, you know, we can do that.
Thank you. Uh, Sam, same question to you. It's about Northlake Mall.
Uh, well, again, I don't think that that's really up to the council to decide. It's, it, I believe the question got at the heart of what does the market need? Um, and it's, you know, the council can't go out and say, hey, we need apartments, so let's build apartments. They, they can say, a developer has come to us and offered to build housing there and, and if, does it fit into the code? If it does, great, it's already been approved. And if it doesn't, then are they applying for a SLUP? And I believe there's a meeting going on right now, which we'll see, um, present, presented later, um, about a potential SLUP um, for housing and, and some redevelopment, um, but I don't have any details on that at the moment since it's, I believe it's currently going on. Um, but that property has also seen some renovations in the past few years that have been pretty remarkable. Um, the Emory offices are, that are over there now are pretty robust and, and great, uh, compared to the empty side of the mall that was next to the food court, uh, on the backside. And the Primrose Academy on the front is, looks to be thriving and there's even new restaurants, including a restaurant from uh, Old Fourth Ward that moved all the way out to Tucker just to be in that location. Um, so there is uh, activity that is promising already. And hopefully the trend continues because there is a lot of property there to be explored, especially when you look at how large that parking lot was to to house all the cars in its heyday and how little of that parking lot has been used in the last couple of decades even. Um, so there's lots of promise, lots of potential and Tucker can use and, and do with a lot of opportunities there.
Thank you. We got a reader question from Rebecca. She actually had to Rebecca, um, the top three uh, priorities pressing issues are on our Q and A. So be on the lookout for that at Decaturishvotes.com, but she asked another question, which I think is pretty good. Uh, how would you, starting with Sam, how would you prioritize competing demands for limited city resources?
Uh, that's a very interesting question. Um, I, I think in a small city, especially, or not, not even small town, uh, Tucker just, you know, being over 30,000 residents is, is getting pretty big. Um, but the, the funding being under high demand uh, recently has been more of a challenge, especially with the ARPA funds and a lot of the funding that was available during COVID kind of getting clawed back by the federal government as well as other, other funds. Um, and so really, the, the prioritization has to be on needs first and public safety immediately. Um, just, you know, what is keeping the roads paved, the traffic lights on, uh, you know, things up and running. And then for the funds that are available after that, how do we keep our citizens engaged? How do we drive services like parks offerings to, to make sure that everybody in Tucker is staying active, staying collaborative, engaging with one another and engaging with the city, um, and, and trying to uh, properly fund things that take care of our citizens, both socially and economically.
Thank you. Alexis, same question.
So one of the things that I'm really proud of, um, is how we as a city have used our resources very wisely. Um, in fact, we have been able to, every year that I was on council, with the exception of the year that the voters approved us taking on uh, public works, helped roll back the mileage rate. So we are very thoughtful about the funds and resources that we do have. I'm going to keep going back to the comprehensive plan because I'm a planner, but also because it is the document that best captures the vision of the entire community. There's a lot of time and efforts spent making sure a lot of perspectives are in there. Um, I have continued to advocate for and ask for our capital improvements program, our budget to all highlight how those programs and how those expenditures connect to the goals that we're trying to achieve. We really need to move past tactics of fund this single program here, fund this single thing here. And instead, think about how we are strategically leveraging the dollars that we do have. And then again, as federal funding in particular is so at risk, um, we really need to think about what are the things that are going to catalyze the most development? So we have a Trails and um, Transportation Master Plan that we're about to release that's specifically looking at which trails and where are going to give us the biggest return on investment. Um, that's a really great opportunity. So we need to be having those conversations. Um, we have had limited opportunities as a whole body to have those discussions and prioritization conversations. Um, but that's a big part of what we should be doing, right? Is, is really weighing, what can we do? Uh, what can we do to protect the things that we have and make sure that we can maintain those and make them, them viable? And then what are the ways that we can be creative?
Thank you. Uh, this is not a question about pickleball, but it is inspired by pickleball. One of the big complaints about that project was uh, the civic engagement or lack thereof around it. Do you agree, or what is your opinion of the city of Tucker's current engagement process? And what could be done to improvement, improve it? We're going to start with uh, Alexis.
So I will say since October of last year, I think that a lot of things that the city has done have gotten better. Um, I am a professional trainer of community leaders on how to do community engagement. I give trainings every day. I'm giving one tomorrow, uh, to the International City and County Managers Association, literally about this. Um, we need a community engagement policy so that it isn't project by project that we are having to seek and cajole and hope, um, that it's coming there, but that there are very clear guidelines for um, city staff across all departments on what level of community engagement we're seeking, what does that mean? Uh, that it's not a box to check, but it really is about how we listen and understand and seek out very intentionally uh, the, the input in the early stages as well as the final stages of any project. So um, I think we're doing a good job, um, adding some things in. We're having more and more of these meetings. Uh, I think partially because um, we really didn't do what we needed to do, uh, with the pickleball project. Um, but I think there's still a lot of opportunity to do, to do even more. Um, and I'm hopeful with uh, new administration and uh, the seeking our new comprehensive plan update, that there'll be even more ways for us to do that.
Thank you. Sam, same questions about civic engagement. Do you agree with how Tucker handles its engagement process currently? Uh, and what would you do to improve it?
I think there are definitely some, there is definitely some room for improvement on the, on the process. I think uh, being able to notify neighbors that are going to be directly and indirectly even um, impacted on things before it comes before the council, uh, seems to be the biggest in place where improvements can be made. Um, I don't have what the right answer is for that unfortunately, but I do think that there, there are a lot of ideas out there that, that are all very promising. Um, and getting that impact early and often, uh, even if it's just communication that is not, hey, bullet point four D on the second city council agenda is going to be about this lot that's in your neighborhood, you know, go check the agenda and that's how you'll find out, um, is, is a way to, uh, it, that's, that's from what I've seen, how a lot of people find out about it is they go to the, the city council meeting agenda and that's where they found out about it. Um, but the, the Facebook channels that the city runs, the Instagram channels the city runs and even the email channels that the city run are all very robust and great at communicating uh, all of that information. And I think we can utilize and leverage those to get the information out to the people early and then do some more engagement specifically at the, at the council level between the people who, the, the council people who are over the constituents and, and question early and then also at the holistic council level too.
Thank you. Starting with Sam, let's say, uh, there's been this idea floated about Tucker having its own police department. Let's say Tucker chooses to stick with DeKalb County Police. What kind of improvements would you like to see DeKalb County make to its policing services for the city of Tucker?
Uh, I think the, the recent study that came out definitely had some glaring, um, things that need to be addressed, specifically the response times. Uh, you know, Tucker PD, the, the, the DeKalb PD that uh, is over the Tucker precinct is great. Uh, but they, the Tucker precinct is also huge. It includes Clarkston, it includes parts of unincorporated DeKalb. Um, and really trying to focus on, um, how best to disperse the, the police force that we do have. Uh, to reduce those response times and make sure that everybody gets the help they need when they need it and not too late after, um, is important. Um, but I think there also needs to be uh, some focus on what is, what constitutes a call and a lot of people, um, call 911 because there's not really a great non-emergency service number. Um, and so leveraging that communication to help people know that, hey, maybe this isn't a 911 call, but this is a call that the police need to address, um, but it's not immediately urgent will help reduce those call times, uh, and response times and could potentially help out on that end.
Thank you. Alexis, same question.
So I want to start by saying, um, we actually have been doing uh, a lot of great work communicating um, with DeKalb PD and with uh, the CEO and the county, um, since uh, CEO Cochran Johnson came on board in January. And one of the challenges with the report, um, which is very good information for 2023 and 2024 is that it doesn't identify and highlight the great work and the changes that have happened with the DeKalb County PD um, this year so far, including changes to the 911 system, including changes to the process. I want to make sure folks hear what I understand from um, attending crime briefings uh, with the DeKalb County PD and the Tucker precinct lead, which is uh, 911 and the non-emergency number go to the same place now. They go to the same switchboard and uh, they, the person on the other end of the phone will prioritize your call um, based on their understanding of, of where things are. And we're down to a four-minute 911 response time in the Tucker area. So one, as we are having these conversations, we need to make sure that we have the full picture of the information that is available and really, really engage with the CEO and the changes that she's made, also seeing some of those challenges before. Um, there's a lot of opportunities on the table in the report, in other ways, that they're willing to work with us on. And I am so excited to have um, a collaborative relationship with the CEO around this issue. Um, I think there's a lot of things that we can do, uh, to make it more visible, um, but we have a lot of good relationships. I think it's really, really important that we understand that DeKalb PD is Tucker's police. So we have good relationships. We have an opportunity to do more and be more collaborative and ask for things. There's a lot of investments that the DeKalb CEO is about to do in the DeKalb PD that are going to benefit Tucker.
Thank you. Next question, uh, we'll start with Alexis for this one. As we all know, Mayor Frank Allman, Tucker's first mayor, is leaving because he's term limited. And there are term limits for council members as well. Do you agree with term limits for city offices in Tucker?
I do. Uh, I, I believe very strongly that the, that's what the voters who voted to incorporate Tucker, um, feel strongly about. Um, it is in our charter. I think there is an opportunity to do a charter review to understand where there could be maybe more balance. Um, and then to clarify, there are some things that are confusing and we haven't tested yet. You know, we are a unicorn, uh, of a city in that we have two council, uh, seats per district and they alternate terms. And uh, there, there's a lot of questions in gray area about what it means to be term limited. Is it a full term? Is it a partial term? Is it for just the post that you're in? Is it consecutive? A lot of those things aren't really spelled out clearly in the charter. So um, my recommendation is that, uh, when it is time for us to do another charter review, we dig in, make sure that there is equitability and clarity. Um, but I agree that term limits are um, a very good tool for us to use in the city so that we can rotate power and not become entrenched, um, with just a select few people.
Thank you. Sam, same question.
I agree. I think term limits are incredibly important. Uh, they keep the leadership fresh and engaged with the community. Um, they, it, it means that there's always going to be a need for somebody to serve in the public. They, it it means that there's always going to be a need for somebody to serve in the public office. Uh, and it it is a great tool that the city was smart enough to put into its charter. The thing I wanna call out though is that while you are term limited in your position, you are not limited after your position, even if you hit term limits. From serving in unelected positions, so you can still benefit your your city. You can still benefit the community by serving in committees that are not for elected officials. You can do these advisory roles, you can be publicly engaged, helping the city in any way you can. Outside of this um, part-time elected official um, that, you know, you just stopped doing because you hit your term limit. Uh, and I think that's an incredibly important thing that uh, I've I've witnessed from a few former city council people. I know um, two of the mayoral candidates are former city council people and then I don't believe they, I don't, uh, one of them hit their term limit. But I, I know that they're both, you know, gunning to, they're really trying to serve their community still. And and they never lost that um, that appetite.
Thank you. Uh, we are at the top of the hour. This is the Decaturish dot com, uh, District Three Tucker City Council Forum. If you're watching us on Facebook Live, welcome. If you're having tech issue issues tonight, don't worry, we're gonna put this on YouTube later so you can see it. If you appreciate our forums and the things we're doing to inform our voters, visit supportyourlocalnews.com. Uh, and make a contribution to our fall fundraiser today. Sam, our next question is going to start with you. If you are elected, how will you work to make Tucker a more welcoming and inclusive place?
Tucker is already an extremely welcoming and diverse community. Um, I think there's always room for for more people. Uh, I think, I think increasing the housing supply uh, is something that we need to uh, focus on. By reducing our dependence on slops uh, and that bringing those people into the community as citizens. Uh, to and 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 uh, inhabitants of Tucker uh, is what we need to be reaching out for. And then as well as in bringing in visitors, uh, you know, Tucker has a thriving economy now. That's grow, seems to be growing every single day with more and more businesses joining every month. And those businesses need customers and patrons. Um, and so bringing people in. Um, of all backgrounds, of all abilities, of all um, you know, everything uh, is something that Tucker. Needs to be welcoming of, needs to be inclusive of, and has been doing a great job, but obviously can can always do more.
Thank you. Alexis, same question.
Well, I'm, uh, as I mentioned, I'm very, very proud of us passing our nondiscrimination ordinance. Which to me was a baseline uh, of what we must have to offer protections. Um, but we have a lot of opportunities to do more to make people feel welcome. I think there's a couple of key strategies uh, that we could use. Um, those boards and commissions that we do have, making sure that there is a broad representation um, from across the community. But also experience um, and ten-year living in the community, uh, so that there's a good mix of again, representation. Uh, we have one of the most diverse um, cities in DeKalb County. Um, our leadership structure doesn't reflect that and doesn't necessarily look like that. And so we have some opportunities to really um, go to a lot more people and engage their expertise. Um, through our boards and commissions, I think we have opportunities to create more of those. Um, one of the things that we are undertaking right now that I'm really proud of. Um, is we are about to do an ADA analysis of all of our, you know, sidewalks, parks, city facilities. And we're gonna engage a uh, advisory group of people with disabilities to help understand and plan for that. So that um, really for the folks who are um, often forgotten about. I had someone who is visually impaired tell me, you know, nobody ever cares about us because they they can see. Um, and that's not the way that we should be doing it. So really prioritizing, um, going to the people who. Um, don't find it as easy to engage and don't necessarily know which things to follow. Um, but really uh, talking to them and engaging with them um, that way. Um, and then I think finding ways to celebrate the diversity. Um, we really as a city have not done our own festivals. And um, things to highlight things like this month is Hispanic Heritage Month. We haven't as a city really done a lot to participate in the Juneteenth celebration. We have a lot of ways that we can show our cultural diversity um, as a city.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, next question uh, is gonna start with Alexis. What in your opinion are the most dangerous roads or intersections in Tucker and what should be done to fix them?
So a couple of years ago, we did the North-South Connectivity Study. And that was before we had Public Works, um, and it highlighted the most dangerous, i.e. deadly uh, intersections in the city. And most of them fell along Lawrenceville Highway. I spoke up at the time, asking that we prioritize that. And one of the responses that I got back was, well, that's a state route, so we're not gonna start there. And instead, we looked at some places that had lower levels of service. But maybe aren't gonna have the same impact in terms of making things safer. So uh, Nor- uh, Lawrenceville Highway at uh, Brockett and Northlake. Um, Lawrenceville Highway at Idowhat and Main Street are two of some of the the most deadly uh, intersections in the city. Now that we have a public works department, um, we can do a lot more of our own uh, measurements and studies. Um, and they do a great job looking at signal timing and and how we can make some things safer in the short term. While we figure out what the capital project needs are and work with the state on the design, which can take a long time. Um, and we also have an opportunity to actually finally, hopefully, uh, next year, implement our um, complete streets policy. So the more we can do on making it safer for um, vulnerable road users, people who are using bicycles. Who are walking or in wheelchairs, um, that's gonna help a lot with safety. Because some of those deadly interactions that we've had were between cars and pedestrians or cars and cyclists. And so um, we really need to be looking at how we can do some of that. Um, but as we go through our capital improvements planning process, we have to prioritize the things that are gonna take longer. So that we can get started and get some traction on those.
Thank you. Uh, in case of anybody, I might not have explained this in the forum. If you see me holding up my church finger, that means the candidates have thirty seconds uh, left to wrap up their answers. So just wanted y'all to know, so there's no mystery there. Uh, Sam, same question to you. Dangerous roads and intersections in Tucker, where are they and how would you fix them?
So in my mind, there are three types of dangerous intersections. There's dangerous intersections because people are traveling at a high rate of speed. There's dangerous intersections because they are maybe not engineered for the traffic that is going through them today. Especially around rush hour when people maybe are not pursuit, not following the traffic laws as they should be. And then there are dangerous, maybe not intersections, but routes because they are shared between pedestrians on foot, pedestrians on bike. Or scooter or, you know, what have it. Um, and so between those three, there's quite a few places in Tucker that could be made a lot safer. Um, I think there's, there are a handful of key intersections um, that have already had some focus done on them. May- most import, most notably La Vista and Fellowship or where it turns into Shandly Tucker. Um, being a particularly tricky intersection because of that kind of diamond it creates. That one, I know the city engineers have been looking for a long time, it's on a state route, but they just put in a left turn lane onto La Vista. So that's improved safety and there was a wonderful transportation presentation last week. Um, by the GDOT team and the DeKalb DOT team and and city engineers. Um, on a handful of intersections, including the Rossar Road and Hugh Howell intersection. Um, that looks very promising to in- increase safety. And the moving the, the pedestrians uh, and cars uh, aspect. The increasing the uh, investment in the path project that has been going on for uh, quite a while now. Is integral to keeping people safe by providing an alternative mean of transportation. Outside of driving in their cars to reduce the number of cars as well as increase the amount of divided. Access points to downtown, to Northlake, to Stone Mountain.
Thank you, thank you. Next question, we're gonna start with Sam. Uh, do you support taking on debt to pay for large municipal projects in Tucker? And if so, what projects should should the city do with that debt?
Uh, I think that's a very interesting question. I think uh, municipal debt is something that a lot of cities and counties. And mean, and states um, go through uh, and and it's a very promising way of raising funds without raising taxes. I I know I need to do a little bit more research on the uh, co- benefits and cons of um, of doing a. A debt round, um, but it seems promising to me. I I don't uh, there are a couple of projects that are. Extremely capital intensive that are on the uh, city's capital improvement plan. Um, that I think could benefit from that now that we're seeing the funding kind of, um, as we discussed earlier, kind of, you know. Being clawed back in certain aspects, um, but I think it's most important for the city to s- to figure out what we can do with what we have already first. And really drive a return on investment on the tax dollars that we are already using before potentially going out. And issuing bonds or, you know, even at raising taxes on the backend.
Thank you. Alexis, same question. Do you support the city taking on debt and what should the city spend that money on?
So um, in order for us to achieve our goals, at some point, we are going to have to take on debt. Like there is, that is um, a key piece of this. There's a couple of different ways to do it. Um, my personal feeling is that the first time we as a city choose to take on debt, uh, we do it through a referendum. Because we need to make the case to the voters about what we are doing. The rationale behind taking on debt is that rather than taxpayers today paying a little bit over time. And eventually we get a capital project, is it allows us to build things quicker and more um, effectively. For the people who are living in our community now, so that they are seeing that return on the investment. That said, it requires a robust community engagement and education process. Um, it requires really having a vision and casting that vision. We have another debt option that was presented to us at our last uh, city council retreat that doesn't require going to voters. I have some hesitancy around that because again, the first time that we take on debt, I think it's really, really important that we really make the case to the community. And I think it's about projects that have value to multiple citizens. So um, I'd love for us to explore what it means to take our Parks Master Plan Update and come up with an implementation and financing plan. There's a lot of excitement and interest about how we revitalize the rec center as well as a performing arts center. There's a lot of opportunity. We haven't gotten down the road on making decisions. But if we can come up with that vision and cast that vision for the community, um, so that they can realize uh, these projects sooner. I I think people will be on board with it. Um, but it's an important com- community-wide conversation to have.
Thank you. Uh, Alexis, starting with you, what are your ideas for improving code enforcement in the City of Tucker?
So I think we do a good job. Um, a lot of people don't know how to report their code concerns. Um, I think there are, uh, continue to be always uh, just communication opportunities. Not because our communications team is not doing something correctly, but just because of the world we live in, people don't pay attention. And I'm sure you know this, Dan, right? Like, you gotta tell people things multiple times and multiple ways before they get it. And it still isn't gonna stick until it's relevant to them. Um, we had had uh, some staff turnover. Turnover and didn't have a full team, so um, I believe we do now, so I think there's still some opportunity to be able to be supportive. Um, we looked into a program a couple of years ago around, for example, people who are uh, seniors. Or who couldn't afford to kind of keep up the maintenance on their house. Um, to look at at partnering with some nonprofits like the Optimist Club and Lions Club to do some community service. Um, you know, code enforcement's main goal is compliance, not penalization. And in some of our conversations as a council with our city attorney, that has always been the focus of how do we make sure people are in compliance? Not trying to hurt them from that. That said, we have some commercial property owners who do not live in Tucker, who have allowed their commercial properties to go into grave decline. And I am incredibly proud of the fact that we passed an ad valorem um, a tax increase. That is specifically for commercial blighted properties, when we have tried every other means, gone to court. Won in court and still not seen that happen. And so that has gotten us some traction on some severely blighted properties. And that's a really important role that code enforcement plays. So we wanna make sure, not that we are over um, correct enforcing. But also that we have a safe and vibrant community.
Thank you. Uh, Sam, same question.
Uh, I think, I think code enforcement gets kind of a bad rap. Uh, nobody sees a code enforcement officer and thinks it's their lucky day, unfortunately. The uh, but I I do think that the city currently does a pretty good job of kind of giving you a notice. Letting you know what it takes to get the notice amended um, and and resolved. Uh, and then we're working with the property owner or the resident to hopefully get it resolved. I think there's, there's obviously more that could be done. But I, I do think that there are programs being trialed kind of in the state right now. That um, could potentially be promising for Tucker to adapt. Uh, I think there's um, there's currently a program for. People who are unable to get their trees trimmed, either economically or or just they aren't physically able to do it, to get those things handled. And seeing a program like that kind of funded already by some um, some other donors. Potentially expanded to um, areas outside of that is something that could could definitely help. But also if you are breaking code and you're just not, you know, complying um, and and not. You know, it's not something that is uh, something you're interested in, then you're going to pay the penalty. And I think that is, that is something that has to happen for uh, the city to continue to keep up its um, its status. But in Tucker, every, every instance that I've seen with a code enforcement officer has been pretty, pretty uh, well resolved. And ended in a um, in a pretty good outcome outside of a couple of notable exceptions.
Thank you. Sam, uh, we'll start this question with you. Do you support the creation of affordable housing in Tucker? And if so, where are some places it could be built?
I I think there's definitely room for affordable housing. Um, if the question is if Tucker, the city should build affordable housing. I don't think that's uh, that's something that the city should get into um, directly. Um, but there is room for affordable housing to be built in Tucker. Uh, there's lots of. Uh, lots of lots where um, either a big box store has has come and gone. Or um, you know, maybe it's a a very large empty lot now. Where apartments could be built, where a section of it is um, devoted to affordable housing. And maybe not an entire unit of it, um, which I know people have um, been a bit more acceptable of. Um, but there's also plenty of Tucker that could be used um, to support just multifamily. Multi-generational housing um, that is affordable in a different way than what what a lot of people um, view. And when they see the term affordable housing, um, there's um, Tucker, it benefits from having a lot of. Development already done, um, but also benefits from a lot of redevelopment, uh, as since we've already talked about. With a couple of of very large notable properties. Um, so I, I think there are a lot of exciting opportunities out there. For both housing and affordable housing. Um, and it it shouldn't be just a one uh, focus. A singular focus of affordable housing, but increasing the housing supply in total to help also drive down prices.
Thank you. Alexis.
So absolutely I do. Um, housing affordability and what we talk about is housing accessibility. Is the number one issue across the country and Tucker is no exception. We also have a very senior population. We are one of the oldest cities in Tucker, in uh, DeKalb County, uh, demographically. Um, and we have a lot of folks who have owned their homes totally paid off since, you know, for like thirty or forty years. Um, and they don't necessarily wanna keep the maintenance up at that house, but they'd also don't wanna lose their community, right? We do not have housing types that meet their needs. Um, I've talked to a lot of people with disabled um, children, adults. Who want to be able to live in things like Centers for Independent Living, um, which is another housing affordability type. Um, and we don't have that either. And so um, it's not about a single bullet, where do you put this thing? Or where do you put this housing type? It's, we need a lot of different types of housing so that the average household in Tucker. Can afford to live there without becoming cost burdened. can afford to live there without becoming cost burdened. And we don't have that, but we have this great plan. Or not even a plan, policy recommendations that we could really think through a plan for how are we gonna implement. Number one recommendation is a housing task force so that people can help engage in Tucker about what we need. So it's everything from cottage homes. We did some, a great sort of pilot zoning on Lawrenceville Highway um, that I am excited to figure out how we can implement across the city. Um, there is a lot of interest in higher density, multifamily housing um, over in the Northlake area. And I think it's important for people to realize that one of the strongest things, this is what I heard, I hear from everybody, that as I'm out talking to neighbors, they all ask about housing. They all want a place for their, their parents, their grandparents, their kids coming back home to be able to live in Tucker. And we don't have that right now. And so we do need to come up with a plan as a city to make that happen.
Thank you. Alexis, uh, we're getting now into our last, we might be able to get two more in, but uh, let's, let's try this one. Uh, Alexis, do you think that Tucker should annex more unincorporated areas into the city? And if so, what should the city annex?
So I have been highly involved in some of our annexation conversations for the past couple of years. Um, so first of all, the city has been very um, passive in our annexation efforts. We have accepted people who want to join us. We have not had a relentless pursuit and aggressive way of, of looking for who we should annex. Um, that said, there have been some areas where we can see the benefit of being able to provide better local service if we could annex. The, the Northlake area, right, that we call it the Donut Hole. We could do a lot more and really help developers and help um, businesses if we had more of that space. There are some residences at the, at the border of District Three that um, are these weird little loops. And so there are some challenges in the annexation process, um, that make it, can make it very hard for um, people who do want to annex in to be able to. Sometimes it just takes one neighbor who doesn't and they're not able to do the process. So um, what we need to do though, is again, look at our comprehensive plan and say, in order to achieve the goals of our comprehensive plan, what do we need to do? How high do we need to grow? We are thirty-eight thousand people. We are one of the twenty largest cities in Georgia, actually. Um, uh, and how are we gonna get there? Is it through annexation? I'm not sure if we think it is. How are we gonna finance that? What services are we going to support? What are the mechanisms for that? Um, we have a lot of people from surrounding areas who come to Tucker um, as a tourist destination. And so we really should think about how we can partner with those folks. In the short term, I think it's talking to people who want to be a part of the city and helping make that a little bit easier. And then from there, we need to have some strategic conversations.
Thank you. Sam, same question to you.
I think there's a lot of places where it makes obvious sense to kind of, um, you know, fill in gaps that are in, on the border between unincorporated DeKalb and, and Tucker and, and even some of the neighboring cities. Um, most, mostly in places where there's most likely a main road and maybe one cul-de-sac off of a, a dedicated road that runs through Tucker is uh, is not incorporated. But you have to take the, the Tucker Road to get in and out of that neighborhood. Um, but I also don't think it needs to come at the expense of the people, people's desire who live there. Um, if they don't want to be annexed, that's absolutely up to them to not be annexed. You know, the, the approach that Tucker has had so far, especially for our level of service providing, you know, we depend a lot on DeKalb and, and the state of Georgia, um, for, for a lot of our services, you know. While that's still the case, it doesn't make a lot of sense for us to go out and annex and, and uh, you know, gobble up unincorporated, unincorporated territories, um, just because we can. Um, that, that doesn't seem like it makes um, happy residents and it doesn't seem like it, it makes um, for a uh, collaborative and, and uniform Tucker. Um, where people have this sense of pride in their city if they just became a part of their city because the city wanted them to be. But there is some, some room to try and uh, gain some of those uh, border simplicities uh, from annexation that the conversations certainly need to happen.
Well, we are at the end of our forum. I want to thank both of our candidates, not just for showing up, but also for being interested in public service. Uh, right now especially, I don't want to get off into different conversations about national politics, but good government's important. And good government requires good people willing to step up and serve. And I'm really glad that we have such engaged, uh, interesting uh, candidates running for our local offices. So thank you both. Before I get to final statements, if you're watching this on Facebook, please, please, uh, go to supportyourloconews.com and contribute to our fall fundraiser. Uh, we're doing really well with it so far. We have some big goals uh, headed into twenty-twenty-six. We need your help to get there. So visit supportyourloconews.com and uh, contribute to our fundraiser today. With that, we're gonna go into two-minute closing statements and we're gonna start with Sam.
First, Dan, thanks for having us tonight. Uh, it's, it's been a pleasure to, to talk with both of you uh, and, and especially about the things that Tucker uh, really cares about, uh, thanks to the Q and A that you, you've put out. And I, I am running mostly so that I can help create the city that I want my daughter to grow up and decide to live in. The fact that she is six years old right now and the Tucker that I know is, I think, nine years old barely at this point, uh, they're both growing faster than I could even imagine. And I want to keep Tucker growing on that trajectory for years to come. Uh, I want it to include the collaboration of the diverse population that we have, uh, that we have seen the city become. Uh, I want it to include services that benefit every citizen, not just a specific cohort. Uh, and I want the city to continue to thrive economically and socially and in every way possible. Uh, and if, if you would like to join me, go to samthenumberfortucker.com, um, and always send comments through there. So you can send them to my email or my phone, um, which are available on the website. I look forward to speaking with anybody who wants to reach out and I will see all of you out there.
Thank you. Alexis Weaver, last word.
Thank you. Well, um, as I stated, you know, I am the current council member for District Three. Um, I ran on a platform of inclusion, I, and transparency. I have delivered on those. I have the physical and uh, knowledge and experience to deliver, continue to deliver on housing solutions for our community. I have the qualifications and experience to engage the community um, and help the city do even more to engage the community. I have a lot of expertise that I have a wonderful opportunity to share with people across the country. And I so very much want to give back in that way to my local community. Um, I have great relationships with um, folks on the council, but also regional leaders. Um, and have been talking and working about, with them about how we can tackle regional solutions that go outside of the city. As a reminder, I have a master's degree in urban planning. Um, I have twenty years of experience working on things that impact cities and communities. I have worked in nonprofits and with nonprofits and I've also worked with business leaders. Um, I want to continue to deliver for my neighbors and make sure that um, the government works for you. So I'm hoping to continue to do that, um, to provide those community-centered solutions. Um, you can visit alexisfortucker.com to get involved. Um, and I look forward to serving you for another four years.
Thank you both so much for joining us. Thank you everyone online, uh, for watching us this evening. You can check this out at Decaturishvotes.com later. Tomorrow, more Tucker, more Tucker. We're gonna have Tucker Mayor Forum at six PM. Three candidates, should be a lot of fun. And then we're gonna have Tucker City Council, District One, September eighteenth at seven-thirty PM. Election Day is November fourth. Please go get registered to vote if you have not registered. And with that, we hope everyone has a lovely evening and we'll see you here tomorrow at six PM for the Tucker Mayor Forum. Have a good night, everybody.